Everyone.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's all of appeals. The zoning ordinance empowers us to hear references from the city council, petitions from other parties for variances and special uses, and appeals from the decisions of the zoning administrator. We hear testimony from those in attendance and then make formal findings of fact based on the evidence presented, which consists of testimony and exhibits and on our knowledge of the community. We then either make a determination or a recommendation to the city council. Testimony is taken under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence and procedures, we ask that you keep your testimony relevant to the proposal as it relates to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record and print your name on the sign in, well, let us know that you're going to testify. Each case will be introduced by the staff and a list of documents will be read into the record. Then the applicant will give an explanation of the proposal. After that, those who wish to testify as either proponents or opponents of the case will have a chance to do so, and the applicant will have a chance to respond. Any case not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next meeting. Melissa, could you please call the roll? Or is it Scott? Either one.
I got it. Sorry, I'm just slow. Okay. Neela Collin.
Here.
Kirill Miranchev.
Yeah.
Jill Zorden.
Yeah.
Lisa Deacon.
Eric.
Myrna Aravalo.
Eric.
Mary McCauley.
Present.
And Max Puchal.
Okay. So I see several people here who are not on our board, so I am going to give an oath that swears in anyone who plans to give testimony in any of the cases scheduled for tonight. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with the case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so I need somebody to make a motion to suspend the rules so we can participate electronically or by telephone. One of our board members.
I move that we suspend the rule so that we can participate by Zoom meeting due to the COVID pandemic.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 So tonight, let me first move for the approval of the meeting minutes for May 19. Does someone have a motion for that?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the meeting of May 19.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so tonight we have two proposals, 820 and 824 Gaffield Place, and they both are for special use. So what we are going to do to move forward into this, we need a motion for each address. However, one discussion by the respondent, one testimony by whoever wants to speak, and then one time where we have to talk about this because they're right next to each other and they're very similar. So we're going to move forward like that. We can't just do one special use standards reading. We have to do two, one for each address. Okay. So we're going to move forward. So in the first one, 820 Gaffield Place. Could the respondent, please, Melissa, could you read the case into the record?
Karen Croto, applicant submits for a special use permit for a child residential care home, Boys Hope Girls Hope of Illinois in the R4A residential district, zoning code section 6862. Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Additionally, we have 824 Gaffield Place. Same applicant submits for a special use permit for a residential childcare home, Boys Hope Girls Hope of Illinois in the R4A residential district, zoning code section 6862. Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case.
Hi, Ms. Croto. Do you want to talk about your proposal?
Yes, I do, and Chris Canning is going to open up for us, and then I will share my screen. Oh, it's already up there.
It's up.
Yeah. Lovely, okay.
Well, good evening, Chair Collin. My name is Chris Canning, and I represent Boys Hope Girls Hope. And I'd like to thank you and the members of the zoning board for getting us in this evening, tonight, on your agenda. As you mentioned, along with me this evening, our Karen Croto, who is the president of Boys Hope Girls Hope, she will be making the lead presentation. We have Greg Miller, who is an eight-year neighbor of one of the homes, who will speak to being what it's like to be a neighbor. And then Jennifer O'Shaughnessy, who is a 15-year resident of Evanston, is also a board member of Boys Hope Girls Hope, to talk to you about her experience of Boys Hope Girls Hope in the Evanston community. And then we'll also talk to you about how Boys Hope Girls Hope came to identify these two properties. Let me just give you a brief overview.
Okay, one second, one second, Mr. Canning. Could you guys mute your mic? Because I'm hearing a lot of background noise, and we want to make sure we can hear the presentation. Just mute yourself and be ready to talk. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Canning.
Thank you. As you mentioned, we're here today on an application for special use for each of the two properties. And before I go any further, I just want you to know, and the members of the board, how helpful Melissa, Scott, Cade, and Michael were to us when we first started this process. We could actually email and walk in documents and talk face-to-face. And as COVID hit, all of this has been done remotely. So the staff has done a great job, and we really appreciate them guiding us through that. I want to make sure that you knew about that and that we would also pass that along to the city council. This is, in my opinion, a very straightforward request. Boys Hope Girls Hope has operated two boys' homes at 823 and 827 Gaffield for approximately 40 years, and a girls' home at 1127 Hinman for approximately 20. So the code section at issue was actually written for these precise types of homes. And what Boys Hope Girls Hope is proposing to do at 820 and 824 Gaffield is completely consistent with what they've done. And candidly, it's precedent here. So we think the recommendation of granting special use will be consistent with the well-established Evanston precedent. We think having the scholars here in these two additional homes on Gaffield will not be a burden on the Evanston school system, will not be a burden on City of Evanston services. And in fact, in the staff memo, it describes the use as low in intensity and indiscernible from typical residential uses. And what I think, if you're not familiar with Boys Hope Girls Hope, what you'll hear during the presentation is the use that's being discussed this evening, we believe will be a positive for the neighborhood because the scholars are supervised. They have very, very structured schedules. They cannot have their own cars. And in that way, it's very different from college students who are in the neighborhood. I would submit that if you were to go by their house any evening and peer through the window in a nice legal way, you would see what appears to be a large, well-functioning family having dinner together, doing the dishes after dinner, and doing homework before bedtime. So we think this is a net positive for the neighborhood. The matter comes before you with a unanimous recommendation to approve from DAPR, and we appreciated them getting together remotely. That was our first experience with how remote meetings were going to go, and it was fine, and we expect the same tonight. So we're going to try something a little different here. I'm going to turn it over to Karen now, who is going to lead you through the PowerPoint. But we got over to Cade, and Cade was able to get into the packet, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. Karen, the stage is yours.
Thank you so much, Chris. And I see that Scott is managing the screen here. So Scott, I'll just let you know when I'm changing slide, okay? Okay. Okay. Oh, sorry, can we go back to the first slide? All right, thank you. Okay, so thank you for having us here this evening. Evanston has always been a community who has wrapped their arms around the Boys Hope Girls Hope scholars. We are grateful that Evanston welcomed us as neighbors 40 years ago when Boys Hope Girls Hope was first founded in Illinois, and we look forward to continuing this partnership. I must pause here in light of current events and say that thanking you for being good to our scholars is not just me being polite. Our scholars are 100% children of color, and we all know the world can be a dangerous place for our kids to simply walk around in. In recent years, we have seen that in certain places, a trip to the corner store for a pack of Skittles can be dangerous for children of color. Evanston has always been a safe place for our scholars. They can walk to Cold Stone Creamery on a hot day for an ice cream, as they often do, and not worry about all the things they would need to worry about in other neighborhoods. So thank you, Evanston, truly, from the bottom of our hearts for being a city that embraces children of color. All right, next slide. The Boys Hope Girls Hope is a competitive scholarship program serving children who are academically motivated and capable but lack economic resources. We accept children as young as middle school and support them through high school, college, and into career entry. So we really follow them across the arc as they grow up and come into their own. I will expand a little later on our structure in this presentation, but for now, Boys Hope Girls Hope truly supports the whole child with wraparound services. Homes, not dorms, and we intentionally want homes and not something that feels institutional. Social, emotional support through our partnership with Family Service Center, wholesome food, medical support, and an outstanding education from middle school through college. All right, next slide. So a little bit of history. The 2019-20 school year for our scholars marked the 40th anniversary of our founding. It is also the 40th anniversary of purchasing our first home in Evanston at 827 Gaffield Place. Two years later, our first cohort of scholars began their life-changing journey at Boys Hope Girls Hope. At the time, we were just Boys Hope. In 1982, we purchased our second home at 823 Gaffield Place. At this point, as I referenced, we were only serving boys. And the favorite part of the history here for me, in 1994, our governing board committed to opening a girls' home. In 95, we became Boys Hope Girls Hope, and our first cohort of girls entered the program in a temporary facility. And the following year, in 96, we purchased and opened our first girls' home at 1127 Hinman Avenue. And that's where our girls currently reside. Okay, I will pause the history lesson there. We spent the next 20 years strengthening our program, transitioning to a leadership model, and finding scholars who are increasingly focused on academics. All were the endeavors that made our program and scholars stronger but also left Boys Hope Girls Hope with a two-to-one ratio of boys to girls. So I'll circle back to that thought later. Next slide. So how do we serve our three homes filled with scholars? We provide private school education at our three partner schools. Our middle school students go to St. Anthony's in Evanston, and then our high school students go to Loyola Academy and Regina Dominican in Willmet. We also provide family-style, value-centered housing, wholesome, balanced meals, medical care, social, emotional care, and then access to robust extracurriculars, club sports, and the list goes on. So anything that all of you would like to offer your children, we offer the scholars. Each home has eight scholars and three full-time residential counselors. Our scholars are monitored 24/7. I could use a third parent in my home between me and you. And the scholar day is very structured. Our scholars are up at 5:30 a.m., and they're out the door and headed to the train every day at 6:30 a.m. They arrive at school and have their school day, and then all scholars participate in extracurricular activities. Everyone is home at 5:30 for dinner, and everyone has chores at 6:30 p.m. And our scholars will all tell you to a person that their least favorite chore is dishes. But they mop, they wipe counters. The girls' house always smells like Pine-Sol. The boys' house, despite their best efforts, still smells like boy socks. They do do their chores. And then from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., they're in study hall. Then they have about an hour to finish up homework, just be with each other, and unwind. And at 10:00 p.m., it's bedtime. This schedule has been the same for decades and runs like clockwork. You can find a scholar from any decade and ask them what the schedule was, and you will hear this exact thing. So in other words, we run our homes like a healthy family. More accurately, we are a healthy, wholesome family. As Chris said, if you peek through our windows at 5:30 p.m., any given weekday evening, you will see a family sitting around the dinner table enjoying a family-style meal in each other's company, like any other family. All right, next slide. As Chris mentioned, we are not a burden on the Evanston school system, police, or fire, or any other service. Our scholars are not allowed to have cars. What you have on Boys Hope Girls Hope is eight scholars per home who love school and who are available for the neighborhood's babysitting needs. And our scholars have babysat quite a bit. Also, we will not increase density on Gaffield Place. As I said, scholars do not have cars. And at 820 and 824, they are currently both occupied by renters. 824 has nine or more college-aged renters. Our eight scholars per house will be supervised, so less bodies and no beer pong if Boys Hope Girls Hope moves into these homes. In addition to being good citizens, Boys Hope Girls Hope scholars actively seek to contribute to the community. As part of our program, scholars complete at least 20 hours of community service each semester. Last year, our scholars contributed over 1,000 hours of community service in Evanston and Willmet communities. Examples of this community service include, we always do the annual hunger walk for the Chicago Greater Food Depository. We are frequent flyers at Feed My Starving Children. And then we tend to go, we get a lot of phone calls because people know that our scholars do community service. So for example, the YWCA will call and ask us if we can staff aid stations for the Race for Hate. Last, this last holiday season, we had a nonprofit who wanted to have a holiday fair at the Broadway Armory for little tiny people. And so our teenage scholars made their way to the Broadway Armory. They were handed costumes that ranged from the Black Panther to the Grinch. They got in the costumes and spent a whole day with three-year-olds, taking a run at them and giving them big hugs and climbing all over them. But they were really great sports, and they had a good time. All right, next slide, please. So now we transition to our future. How do we envision that timeline in the present and the immediate future? Next slide. So I want to pause here and express gratitude to the support we have received from neighbors. And I also want to add that we had planned to host multiple open houses for our neighbors so they could hear about our hopes and dreams for two additional houses on Gaffield directly from us. And then sadly, COVID-19 and the need to shelter in place thwarted those plans. But we do intend to host those open houses once it is safe to gather because we want to be good neighbors. So as you know, we have identified and pursued two additional homes on Gaffield, 820 and 824 Gaffield Place. 820 is currently under contract, and we've negotiated the right of first refusal for 824. So our hope is to successfully complete the special use permit process in the next two months so that we may close on 820 Gaffield on August 17. Our board has asked that we get through this process before closing so that we do not purchase a home that we cannot use. If all goes well, we hope to purchase 824 Gaffield next spring. And next slide. It is important to Boys Hope Girls Hope to be a good neighbor. Purchasing these two homes on Gaffield is part of a larger plan to update our homes and make program upgrades, landscaping upgrades, et cetera. Of course, all this requires fundraising, but we are up for the task, even in the current environment. Immediately after acquiring 820 Gaffield, the plan is to initially use this house as a swing house. So hang with me here for a moment. This is the plan. We would take the young men who currently live at 823 Gaffield, and we'd move them across the street to 824, to 820 Gaffield while we renovate 823. Once the work is over, we move them back to 823. Then the gentlemen from 827 Gaffield would move across the street to 820 while we renovate 827, and then move back once complete. Phew, then we would renovate 820 Gaffield. And once we complete that home, we would move our young women from 1127 Hinman to 820 Gaffield and sell Hinman. And then finally, we would renovate 824 Gaffield. Once all these renovations are complete, we hope to open our second girls' home, which we estimate would be the spring of 2024. Okay, next slide. So now I would like to have our two neighbors who are here to speak on our behalf, speak on our behalf. So first, we have Greg Miller, who's our next-door neighbor at Girls Hope on Hinman. He's been our neighbor for eight years, and his family, his involvement is really a family affair. Our girls babysat for their son for several years, and Greg and his wife Edith have been, have mentored a handful of our scholars and are always supportive in everything, from lending us their grill when our grill breaks right before a barbecue to just always thinking of us and being good neighbors. So Greg?
The, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Miller. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, hi, my name is Greg Miller. I'm at 1123 Hinman. And I moved to Evanston with my wife and six-year-old son in 2012. And we didn't know anything about Boys Hope Girls Hope when we arrived. And within a year or two, we had decided that they were the best neighbors we'd ever had in our lives, and that's continued to be true. So I will say that as somebody who lives in Evanston and works in Evanston and has a child in District 65 schools, it makes me tremendously proud of my community that we have the Boys Hope Girls Hope Foundation here. They're an amazing organization with just inspiring and fantastic kids and great leadership. And this is the kind of thing that Evanston can and should do. So I say that as an Evanstonian and somebody believes, who believes tremendously in this organization. I study child development, especially in kids who come from low-income backgrounds and disadvantaged backgrounds. And I can tell you professionally, this is one of the most successful and amazing programs I've seen in my work. I think it's tremendous. As a neighbor, getting past the sort of bigger-picture stuff, I can tell you, they are just absolutely fantastic people to have next door to you. I wish that more of our neighbors were as conscientious about clearing the ice and trimming their lawn and doing all of the little things that unfortunately, people on our block and other blocks don't always get around to doing. I wish that other neighbors were always so willing to engage with us and welcome us to the neighborhood. The girls, for many years, would take our son out trick-or-treating. They'd play soccer with him in the backyard, in the front yard. They babysat him for years. They helped him with his math homework. He just graduated last night from Nichols, so he's a little beyond the age where he needs babysitters. But he still has relationships with girls that are living, or were living, before COVID next door, and with young women who have gone on to college and beyond. We still are in touch with them. They come back, they stay with us, they visit the house. These are amazing young women. We will be tremendously sad not to have them next door. But the organization needs to grow, and having a second home so that they can serve eight more young women and help us improve social mobility is absolutely a worthy aim and something that Evanston should support. So we're fully behind them moving to Gaffield. And you know, I can only say that we will continue to be as involved in this organization as we possibly can because we believe in it, and they bring so much. I'm happy to stop now and be quiet. If people have specific questions, I'm also happy to respond to those. You just tell me what you need.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions for this respondent?
No.
Okay. And just so everyone knows, we feel the same about Greg and his family as they feel about us. It's been a great relationship for many years. So next we have, so thank you, Greg. Next, we have Jennifer O'Shaughnessy. Jennifer is a longtime Evanston resident. She lives near all three of our homes, and she has been involved with Boys Hope Girls Hope for 15 years, probably over 15 years. She has served on the governing board, she's served on the women's board, she's chaired the governing board. We don't leave her alone. She's currently the vice chair of the governing board. She's just the most amazing board member we have. I think I'm allowed to say that. And she's here to speak about being a neighbor.
Hi, thank you for having us and for figuring out how to let this process go forward in these strange times. My name's Jennifer O'Shaughnessy. I've lived in Evanston for 23 years, first on Lincoln Street by St. A's and the Central Street Station, and now at 321 Davis. So I'm kind of between the boys' houses and the girls' houses. I wanted to speak about being a neighbor but also just about these wonderful young people, and I think what a treasure they are for Evanston to have. I became involved with the organization because my children went to school with the middle schoolers at St. A's. And I think somebody just asked me if I wanted to take a birthday dinner to the house. And I went to the girls' house on Hinman, and I just said, you know, these girls are living right here in my neighborhood, and I didn't even know anything about it. And I really found those kids compelling and have gotten involved in a lot of other ways. My kids have driven them back and forth to Loyola Academy. We've, you know, done college applications, just whatever. This organization is trying to provide for these kids whatever we provide to our own kids. And so you know that is a thousand things. It's making sure you have a prom dress. It's, you know, getting you a ride back home on a home weekend when it's not safe to take the train. It's just, it's just a lot of things. But, and I've really enjoyed having the chance to sort of be a parent to these kids in the way I parent my own. So I've really, it's wonderful to have these guys as neighbors. The kids on Gaffield, they blend right in with the neighborhood. You know, the grass is mowed. Sometimes they're playing basketball in the back, but you'd never differentiate those houses from the house next door that's got the Northwestern lacrosse team in it or the house across the street that's full of other students. Over the years, we've had a lot of nice interactions with some of the Evanston city government. Lorraine Morton was known to come to dinner. We've had Evanston police officers come in to talk to our scholars. Other sort of role models in the community, we try to get them into the houses so the kids can kind of meet them, especially African-American, you know, neighbors and friends that we have to come in and kind of introduce, introduce the kids to a way of life that they often haven't seen. It's sad to say, and we're seeing the effects of it now, but a lot of these kids, before they came here, you know, they've hardly seen the lake. They've never been to a restaurant that wasn't McDonald's. They haven't had a role model. They've had a lot of hard-working role models, hard-working parents and grandmothers, but they often haven't had professional role models. So we really try to expose them as much as we can to the people they're hoping to become, men and women for others and kind of the captain of their own lives. We don't do the hard work. They do the hard work. They go to, they go to schools with kids who have everything. And we try to, you know, make their family life with us as normal as possible. But anyway, I'd rather answer questions than tell about my, than, than tell about. One more, one more thing. How we came to these houses, I think, is also important to understand. Since before I was the board chair, we had been looking for another girls' house because every year we turn away qualified girls who would love to be in our program because we just don't have enough beds. Both Regina and Loyola would love to have more girls. Both of their boards have agreed that they would love to take more girls from our program. And we looked in Skokie, we've looked in Willmet. And finally, after looking for houses and discussing with those cities, we just realized that Evanston is really our home. Evanston is where these girls feel comfortable, you know, walking down the street, going into CVS, whatever. No one's giving them a second glance and they can really just live here and be themselves and become themselves without feeling like anyone's looking over their shoulder or seeing them as, you know, being an outsider. So that, a real estate agent friend directed us to these houses, which miraculously were right across the street from where we've always been for 40 years. We didn't even, we knew this neighbor, but we didn't, these houses were not for sale. And when we approached her, she was very interested. She loves the boys. And she was very interested in passing her properties along. Not at a discounted price, but in passing her properties along to our organization. So we're hoping you see it the same way. And that expansion and sort of consolidation in this, on this street really makes sense as a special use within what's been envisioned for the R4A district.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Ms. O'Shaughnessy?
I'm just a little bit curious about, you know, I guess that it is, you know, as with all things, the, you know, concentrating all of your homes in one place. I do understand that there's an efficiency in that. I'm just, I'm wondering if you have any concerns. So, you know, I went to a school where there were boys and girls separated, and that was always a very good thing. And I'm just, you know, I'm wondering if you have any concerns about the fact that you will have, you know, all of these young people in proximity to one another instead of slight separation.
That actually is a great question. And for a long time, the women who kind of mothered these kids, the women's board, many of the women of, I would say, the generation ahead of all of us were very much in favor of the all-girls school and the separation from the boys. But I think it's not so much that times have changed, but these kids are all connected with social media. They do have some freedom to, you know, to go out of the house, you know, to with.
Of course, sure.
And so I think we expect to help them grow into young adults who can manage their own behavior as opposed to just thinking we're going to keep them apart. We also don't want them to get to college not having had sort of the regular kind of growing up, you know, getting to know people of the opposite sex. It didn't always work out well in the past when girls got to college and they literally had gone only to school with boys and had been living kind of in this convent, for lack of a better word. That was not necessarily the way to be 18 and on your own. So we've thought about that and we have looked at homes that were a little further away. But I think in discussing it in detail, we've decided that they're always fully supervised. So it's not really, that's not so much of an issue. And it's part of our responsibility to help them grow into young people who can manage a little time together with their peers across the street. So I think we're really hoping it feels like a great community of siblings and that we can help manage the pieces of it if it, if folks really do want to be more than friendly. But we have thought about that and it is a good question. And I'm sure we will have some older board members who say, you know, we don't want them to be so close, but I think they already have, the girls already have boys in their lives. The boys already have girls in their lives and we just want those relationships to be healthy.
We also see it as an opportunity to teach them how to be a community and have healthy relationships. And we actually do have a rule that scholarships can't date each other, just to make things simple.
That's good, that's good.
And they, like they, for example, don't take each other to each other's school dances or any of that. We try hard to have them make new friends and build their own community, you know, in addition to these kids that they live around. But they are friendly and I think they're looking, to the extent they've heard about this plan, they think it seems like it'll be good. And the economies of scale are really very hard to look past. I mean, being able to coordinate the carpooling and some of the meals and that sort of thing, that's always our toughest challenge. And the idea that you'd have these, you know, 12 adults all able to coordinate really gives us more opportunities for kids to do more after-school activities, more music lessons, you know, whatever, with more hands.
Yeah, again, my concern stems, not, I've known some boys, girls, or Boys Hope scholars. And they're among the finest young gentlemen that I have met. And I just so applaud what it is that you're doing. I only worry that it is the, precisely what makes them so comfortable is the invisibility of their circumstances. And so when suddenly eight people become 32 people, I just get a little bit concerned that it changes the dynamic in the neighborhood and in the home structure, frankly.
Karen, you may be the one to speak to this, but I think that 16 boys who are already next door to each other are quite invisible on that street. To the extent invisibility is a good thing. And the girls, I think, as Karen mentioned.
For their purposes, for their purposes.
Right.
That is what I mean.
Yeah, their day is so structured. I don't see it changing very much. I mean, they're still going to go to the train, they're at school almost the whole day and they come home primarily to, you know, dinner and homework. So I guess I don't see it as being very, very different from their perspective, except for maybe, maybe you've got somebody across the street who's in your calculus class and now you two can study together, you know, maybe that sort of thing where they get some support. And Karen, you can speak to that. I think we're looking for them to be able to support each other a little as well.
Yeah. I love that they, you know, interact with the community and they've gotten to know the neighbors. The woman who is selling us these two homes, she wanted to teach the boys how to grow herbs because she's a fantastic gardener. So I think, I think, you know, that for them to be visible is a good thing. They're lovely young people. You know, I have a 13 and a 17-year-old and they are often, you know, at basketball and volleyball. And that is this whole group. They are, they're, you know, doing dance class and. So, you know, I wish I could see them more at the houses when I stop by. They're busy. But, you know, I understand what you're saying and I think I don't, I'm not too concerned about that because they are just so busy like teenagers are these days, almost a little too busy. My kids more. And, you know, they come home exhausted, they eat, they do their homework and they go to bed.
Well, again, I've known people who have worked with Boys Hope, Girls Hope. And I've known some of the scholars and I have absolutely nothing but good things to say about it. So it's not like, it's a major concern. I just, I bring this up because I would hate to see what is such a great dynamic now be altered with too much impaction. So, you know, that's why I bring it up, but you've discussed it. And so I trust that.
You know, another piece of the stepped process here, you know, we'll have the girls in 820, if all goes well with this hearing and with the city council. We'll have girls in 820 before we need to for certain move them into 824. So if it turns out there's a downside we haven't anticipated.
You'll have a trial run.
Right, right. I mean, we won't, we'll still have our 1127 house. And I think that's part of the beauty of the way the seller would like to sell these, you know, in a stepped way. It does give us a chance to see how it really works before we're committed to a full-on campus.
Right.
Though other affiliates in other cities do have a campus and they really, really like it. When we've seen theirs, we've gone a little green with envy over the campus setup that they have in St. Louis and some of the other affiliates.
And it's worked well at the other affiliate. So we just, we'll just have to be on our game like we always are.
Well, I'm excited about it, you know, overall. I think that, again, all of my experience has been quite positive and I applaud you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for Jennifer before I move to this last slide?
Any more questions from the board? Okay.
Okay, so the last slide. So I just want to close by saying, we really hope you grant our request for this special use permit in order to strengthen and expand the community that is Boys Hope, Girls Hope. As we have outlined this evening, we have a vision and we are hopeful to realize this vision in Evanston. The chance to add a second girls' home and to grow in this community allows us to offer this life-changing experience to even more deserving young people. So thank you so much to the time you've dedicated to this process and we wish you all well.
Thank you. So Ms. Croto, I have a question for you, a little bit off of your program. So you have 820 Gaffield and 824 Gaffield. You're going to make some physical changes to those buildings as well? And how similar are they so we can consider this discussion for both of them? How similar are the physical changes you intend to make?
Well, the outside will, you know, remain the same. But we're really just trying to make it more to match our program. So for example, we want to have a more open plan in the kitchen because dinner is a big deal in our program because it's the one time, as it is in many families, that we're all together as a home community. And so we would like to open up, and we like to teach our scholars how to cook. There, you know, it's just, it's important. I wish my mom had taught me how to cook a little more before I left home. But we're, that's kind of something we're adding to our program. So to have an open plan where the kids can come in and they can help chop vegetables, you know, for dinner is part of our vision. And then we're trying to create study space in every home so that the kids can, you know, like currently in our girls' house at Hinman, the girls sit around the dining room table every single night and they work together. It's a little harder in the boys' houses because it's a little more choppy. So we would just like to create an open-planned study space. So we're just trying to kind of open the main floors up a little bit. And then for 824 and 820, we just want to make sure that, you know, we have the bright-sized bedrooms for the kids so that there's pretty equal sharing of bedroom space. You know, make sure everybody has a closet. It's really just kind of basic family stuff.
Karen, can you explain to the board about how the homes are going to be set up with respect of what goes on on the first floor, the second floor, and then where the supervisors are?
Absolutely.
Because I think that's driving part of the question.
Question, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. So as you know, we're licensed by DCFS, so we make sure that we are compliant with what they require. So the main floor is what I was describing, you know, dinner space, study space, the common area. The second floor is where the scholars stay. It is part of DCFS requirements that residential counselors and scholars cannot have their living space on the same floor. So the second floor will be all the scholars and then bathrooms to accommodate them. And then the third floor is where our residential counselors stay. And at any time, we usually have two or three who live in the home. And then we have a couple more part-time who come and go. And then they all take turns being the overnight residential counselor. So the living space is very divided.
And Jennifer, does one of the homes need more work on the third floor than the other one?
Yes. So if you look, if you are all on the last slide and you see the Queen Anne, that's 820. The main floor of that house is in great shape. The second floor, the bedrooms are wonderful, but it has an additional kitchen because it's been divided into multiple apartments. So it's our plan to create some additional bathroom and shower space out of that kitchen space. And then on the third floor, there's also a kitchen because it's an apartment. You can see the, if you look closely at the picture, you can see the fire escape that accesses each of the apartments. So we would reconfigure a bit of the upstairs to make the kitchenette for our staff so that when they're off-duty, they don't have to come down to the main kitchen where if you remember from having lots of children in your house, if you come into the kitchen, they're on you, even if it's your day off. So we'd like to create like a convenience kitchen for them. There's already a full kitchen on the top floor of 820. And then we need to move a wall, I think, or two, to get the bedrooms configured properly up there. And then on 824, which is the olive-green one on the upper right, it's been divided into three completely separate apartments by the current owner, or it was probably divided before. So it needs to be opened up on the main floor. When you walk in that front door, you immediately hit another door that divides, you know, one goes to a stairway and one goes into the main floor. It's very inelegantly done. It's really choppy. So to open that back up, probably to what it originally was. So you have a living, dining, kitchen area and guest bath on that floor. The upstairs is in pretty good shape. We just need to take out the extra kitchen and probably create a bathroom space. Each or other houses has a very large bathroom or two large bathrooms to accommodate the eight scholars. And then again, the top floor of that house is a separate apartment, so it's pretty well set up for our staff. I think it might just need some cosmetic changes to make it, you know, a good place for the staff to be. Does that explain what we'd hope to do? Essentially, the changes are the same, to add a bathroom space on each second floor and then take out some of the things that have been added to divide these houses into apartments.
Thank you, Ms. O'Shaughnessy. I was just wondering if there were any questions from our two architects on the board?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Lotta, if I can jump in, though not the voice of architect on the board. I just had a question as to whether there's any changes on the exterior. I see that 820 Gaffield is an Evanston landmark. So I, you know, I've heard about the improvements to the interior. Can you speak about what changes, if any, are anticipated on the exterior of the homes?
Karen, would you like me to? Karen, go ahead. Do you want to? So I think the plan to the exterior is just to maintain it. I live in a house that's about the same vintage and that's no small task. But we'll just, you know, keep it painted and replace, you know, rotten wood in accordance with the requirements of a historical facade. So there's no plan to change the look of the exterior of that house other than to maintain it. I mean, it also has an extensive kind of closed porch system on the back. And there was some talk of altering that, but it doesn't change the footprint. And I think anything we do would be an improvement to what it looks like now. And then 824, its exterior, I'm assuming that's stucco over clapboard. I'm pretty sure that wasn't built as a stucco house. We don't have any plans to change the exterior other than to upgrade the look of it. And we have not, we've only had architectural renderings of the interiors of the building, but we wouldn't do anything to the footprint. We just will have to look at the constituents of that outside and see if it makes sense to side it or something or if it makes more sense just to leave it how it is. I don't, we haven't really looked much into the structural integrity of 824's exterior. I hope we paint it another color at the very least. But there's no plan to change the footprint of either house. And I think 824 could use some love in landscaping.
And I may have missed this in the packet, but it sounds like you referenced that the students go home then on the weekends? Are they, do they go home every weekend or where are they at on the weekends?
Every other weekend, they go home. We partner with our families and, you know, we want them to maintain a very strong connection. So every other weekend, they go home and then every other weekend, they're with us. And that's usually when we do the community service. You know, they go to their school football games, you know, school spirit things. They go home for Christmas, you know, they go home for, we try to work it so that they go home for Mother's Day weekend and Father's Day weekend, you know, we try to make it reasonable.
They plan to go home, if there's a Monday holiday, I feel like they were home for Veterans Day. But they, and we have a COVID plan, but there may be a little less going back and forth this fall, as Karen was telling me today. Until we can figure out a better way to test, we're not going to want them going back and forth as much as they have in the past. But typically on weekends, they're either at home, you know, doing the same things all of our kids do, homework and leaf-reaking and what have you, or they're with their parents.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions about the structural changes?
No, I'm good. I'm actually very excited about the project.
I reviewed the both houses. If they do not go out of their current footprint, of course, they'll have construction projects that will be approved, building permits and all these things. But I believe they'll be okay with the current layout and with the changes they'll be making. And without going out of the footprint, they'll be fine. So I don't have any significant concerns about this.
Okay, so with that, we're going to close the record unless you want to say something else, Ms. Croto? Unless you have anything else to add, because we closed the record, we'll discuss it ourselves and then go through the special use standards.
If I could jump in for one quick second before the record is closed. We did receive some public comments that just came in today. And one is from Paula Ayakuchi. I'm sorry if I blundered that name. And her comment, it was actually a question, so if we could have the applicant respond to this. Um, and you've pre you've, I think you've largely talked about it, but her question is, is this a continuation of what was in place prior with Loyola Academy? Or is it an expansion or something completely new? And then after that, we might have one phone-in call. So applicants, if you want to go ahead and respond to that.
Sure. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I don't quite understand the question.
It it is, is this a continuation of what was in place prior with Loyola Academy? Or is it an expansion or something completely new?
Loyola Academy will still be one of our partner schools, if if that's what the.
I I think it's getting at, yes, is it the same Boys Hope, Girls Hope program and is it?
Yes. Our scholars will continue to attend Loyola Academy, uh, you know, Regina Dominican and St. Anthony's. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's exact, it's just a continuation and an expansion of our the same program.
Perfect, thank you. And then um Scott, do we have anyone in the waiting room? Stuart Cleveland was maybe going to call in?
There's no one in the waiting room right now, but um uh we may ask, um, if there's anyone that does want to speak, uh, you can open up your participants' window and there's a feature where you can raise your hand. So if you would like to provide public comments, um, now would be the time to virtually raise your hand or unmute yourself um so that that the chair could recognize you.
Hi there, this is Stuart Cleveland. You mentioned me a minute ago. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, I've been watching along with great interest and I just figured rather than try to do a phone call, which I'm not quite sure how to do, I would just talk to you this way, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Great. So my name is again is Stuart Cleveland. My wife and I live at twenty-one forty-five Maple Avenue, which is, if you follow Gaffield down to Maple and hang a right three houses, that's us. And uh we support the special use permit. I've been very impressed by the presentation this evening. Um, just want to say that I personally have lived on Maple Avenue for thirty-two years since nineteen eighty-eight. Karen's been here since nineteen ninety-three. And as far as we know, during that time, Boys Hope houses on the north side of Gaffield have never been a problem. They seem to be run in an exemplary manner and it sounds like it from the testimony we've heard tonight. Um, so we're in favor of it and uh keeping in mind frankly, that if the board doesn't approve the special use permit, the properties on the south side, the ones we've been discussing, eight twenty and eight twenty-four, will continue as student housing and probably with no owner occupancy or supervision, which at least they have some of now. So given a choice between two more Boys Hope houses or Girls Hope houses, as I guess they'll be, and two rental properties, we much prefer the former. So we support the proposal and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I have not received any other public comment, um, but I do want to make one comment to the board as you guys start discussing and deliberating. Um, there has been testimony that eight twenty-four Gaffield will not be used um for this use until roughly um twenty twenty-four. And the typical special use requirements uh require either the use or a building permit for the use within one year of the special use approval. So as you're discussing, um, consider what kind of condition you would like that can extend that one year. Um, you could allow the special use to expire by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, if that's what you want to do. Uh, but just that you guys will consider that.
Should we put that in the motion?
Yes, that needs to be a condition in the ordinance, yes.
And and that's for Melissa, that's for eight twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And and we're agreeable to that condition?
Any other? Go ahead.
The condition is just an extension, so it's it's basically making sure that it doesn't run out on you.
Oh, correct.
Yeah.
But but I I appreciate Melissa's suggestion so we don't have to keep coming in every year.
Right.
Right. Okay, there's no one else. We are going to close the record for the board deliberations. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, board, what do we have to say about this? I actually agree with it. I think a a campus idea is great for economies of scale and to just make sure that they can coordinate their activities. I think it's a good idea. Right now, I went over there and I could see where there were other buildings in the back that were uh used similarly. I don't know who they're used for, but they look like they're, you know, split up in the same kind of way. So I'm in uh favor of the proposal.
I'll jump in.
Oh, go ahead. No, I agree with you completely. I I'm uh, once again, every experience I've had with uh Boys Hope, Girls Hope has been nothing but positive, I mean, exceptional. And um and I think that the campus idea, while I have some reservations about those boys and girls getting together, um, I I think that that's really a good idea for economy of scale. And um I think that it actually is going to enhance that neighborhood. Uh, the the students come and go, but these group homes will be anchors on Gaffield, and that's a wonderful thing.
I'll jump in next. Um, I support the project. I've been in Evanston, gosh, I don't know, twelve years now. And I'm pretty blown away. I've never heard of um the programs there on Gaffield. And so it's really exciting for me to for me to learn about the program and hear about your success. And and I'm so pleased to hear that Evanston has been such a a good home for these kids. And I think to the extent that we can help, um, you know, help you be successful and help you welcome more kids into the program um and enjoy economies of scale, I I I fully support it. I don't see any negative impacts, uh, you know, to the community or to that neighborhood, the way you've described it. And so I'm in support of the project.
I'll echo that. I'm surprised that I was born and raised in Evanston for about as long as you've been in existence. And I've never heard of you before reading the packet, so I'm I'm a little bit disappointed in myself that I've missed out on that. Um, I think you've proven yourself to be a a good neighbor as I've exemplified through your success and through the testimony of your supporters and and that as a city, we should we should welcome your expansion. So I'm in support of this as well.
I'm in. And uh. So it's a great cause and uh it's it's a great project. And uh I think it's it's beneficial for for the city and for the street and for everybody. It's a great cause and I admire this. Uh, so good luck. I'm in support.
And uh I'm in agreement as well with all my board members. I'm actually uh very excited about um making all of the houses um almost as a unit so that that whole entire block on both sides of the street will now become uh more unified for your program. So I'm in complete support.
Okay, that's great. Any more comments? If we don't have them, I'm going to move on to read the special use standards. I'll first read the ones for eight twenty Gaffield and then we'll do a motion with the conditions. And uh then I'll move to the ones for eight twenty-four Gaffield, the uh special use standards. We won't have another discussion. So if you have any other comments, this is a good time. No? Okay, perfect. Special use standards for the ZBA to recommend that the city council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposal, special use A, is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. This standard has been met. Child residential care home is specifically listed as a use that may be allowed in the R four A general residential district, code section six eight six three. B, complies with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. This standard has also been met. The use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive general plan. The proposed use promotes the growth of a longtime Evanston institution and staff believes that no adverse impact to the neighborhood will occur. C, does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or as a category of land use. This standard has been met. The staff has not received any comments opposing the proposal. The proposed use is appropriate in intensity and scale for the extant mix of residential uses and densities in the neighborhood. D, does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. This standard has been met. The proposed use would occupy the existing residential structure in a similar way and will be indiscernible from proximate residential uses and structures. E, is adequately served by public facility and services. This standard has been met. The subject property is adequately served by the public facilities and services, including alley trash and recycling services. F, does not cause undue traffic congestion. This standard has been met. The proposed use will not impose any more traffic than a normal residential use. G, preserves significant historical and architectural resources. The standard has been met. The structure is significant and the applicant has made a commitment to its preservation and continued integrity. H, preserves significant natural and environmental resources. This standard is not applicable. I, compiles with all other applicable regulations. The standard has been met. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. Can someone please call the motion? Anybody? I can't hear you, Muffy. You're muted. You have to unmute at the bottom left.
Got it, got it. So I moved that in the case of eight twenty Gaffield Place, uh, case twenty ZM JV zero zero one eight, that we recommend to the city council that they approve the special use uh with the condition that the uh project is completed in compliance with all of the documents that have been presented here.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor of this uh motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you. Your motion has been granted. It moves on to city council. I am going to move forward with no discussion to eight twenty-four Gaffield Place. Whoever makes this motion, please remember what Melissa said about it. The special use standards for the ZBA to recommend the city council grant a special use, the ZBA must find that the proposed special use A is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies. This standard has been met. Child residential care home is specifically listed as a use that may be allowed in the R four A general residential district, code section six eight six three. B, complies with the purposes and the policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. This standard has been met. The use is in compliance with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive general plan. The proposed use procs promotes the growth of a longtime Evanston institution and the staff believes no adverse impact to the neighborhood will occur. C, does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing existing special uses or as a category of land use. This standard has been met. The staff has not received any comments opposing the proposal. The proposed use is approximate in intensity and scale for the extant mixes of residential uses and densities in the neighborhood. D, does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. This standard has been met. The proposed use would occupy the existing residential structure in a similar way and will be indiscernible from proximate residential uses and structures. E, is adequately served by public facilities and service. This standard has been met. The subject property is adequately served by the public facilities and services, including alley trash and recycling service. F, does not cause any undue traffic congestion. This standard has been met. The proposed use will not impose any more traffic than a normal residential use. G, preserves significant historical and architectural resources. This standard is not applicable. H, preserves significant natural and environmental resources. This standard is also not applicable. I, complies with all other applicable reg regulations. This standard has been met. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. Can I get someone to call this motion? Anyone? And don't forget the condition.
Uh, I I then we'll move in the case of eight twenty-four Gaffield Place, case twenty ZM JV zero zero one seven, that we recommend to city council that they approve the special use and further that they extend the special use designation through twelve thirty-one twenty-four when the project is expected to be completed.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor of this?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Your special use has been granted for eight twenty-four Gaffield. Uh, Melissa will let you know what the next steps are.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're so grateful.
We're actually thrilled that you're here in Evanston. And seriously, I've met some of your scholars. They were friends of my children in high school. Top-notch kids, honest to goodness. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you. We're so excited to be in Evanston and have some more girls.
Just made Karen's birthday.
Happy birthday.
You're the best gift ever.
So Melissa, do we have any other business?
Um, we do not. Just a special thank you to everyone for dealing with the virtual meetings and communicating well throughout. So thank you.
Thank you. So our next scheduled board meeting is June sixteenth, twenty twenty, and it's also going to be a virtual meeting as well, right, Scott?
Yes, that's that's what we're planning.
Okay, so can I get a motion for adjournment, please? Anyone?
I move to adjourn.
Second. Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Nice to see your faces, everyone. Thanks.
Thanks, Beal.